Good evening and welcome to the January 9th, 2023 Planning Board Meeting. Happy New Year, everyone. If we could please first stamp for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. All right, we have some correspondence. Does anybody want to talk about anything in there?
No.
Nothing here.
Okay. Anything on your end, John?
Nope.
All right, then we have the draft minutes of December 12th, 2022. Any comments, corrections?
Nope.
Counselor?
No, but couldn't go here.
John?
Nothing here.
Thank you very much, Nancy. All right, do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes of December 12th, 2022?
Motion. Second.
Okay, we'll move into the regular portion of the meeting. First on the agenda, we have S D M L Realty LLC. This is a public informational hearing. Location is 3735 Crompon Road, Route 202. It's a proposed 3,069 square foot Duncan drive-through. How are you?
Good evening.
Oh, do I have a motion to open the public?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry.
How are you?
Good. Share my screen here. Okay, good evening. My name is Ruben Buck. Work for Engineering and Surveying Properties. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, S D M L Realty. Paul and Mario Sardinia, they are the franchisees for Duncan. The plan is to construct a 3,000 square foot Duncan with the drive-through on tax lots 11, 14, 15, and 23, which will be combined to facilitate this project. There'll be a dual drive-through lane in the back of the property. On the western side of the property, there's going to be patron parking spaces, 24 of them, and on the east side will be employee parking spaces. The loading area and dumpster enclosure are also located on the eastern side of the property. We have been working with Colliers Engineering to figure out what would be optimal for the left-turn lane into the site, and they did come back with the recommendation that a left-turn lane was warranted. So they will be designing and incorporating a left-turn lane for this project, which will extend from the Shell Station where it's already a left-turn lane. It will extend to the frontage of our property, and then there will be a median taper from the front of our property going west to aid in traffic flow into and out of the site. Building is going to have, building, facade-mounted light fixtures, and there will be light poles around the side as well. We prepared an initial lighting plan that shows that there's no light that leaves the site. Additionally, we thought it important to prepare an initial landscaping plan, and a later submission, we'll do a full landscaping plan for the entire site, but obviously with the residences to the rear, we wanted to show that we fully intend to screen the site as much as practical. So in the rear of the property here, if I'm able to zoom in. There we go. We're proposing two staggered rows of green giant arborettes, 10 feet tall at planning. Additionally, grading the site, we're going to end up with about a 10-foot wall to the rear. So between the wall height, the trees for screening, and we're also proposing a board-on-board fence to the rear as well. We anticipate that the site will be well-screened from the residents to the rear. In addition to that, we prepared several line-of-site figures for the residences that are directly adjacent to us, so it's 3744 Crompon, Old Crompon Road, 3738, and missing one at the top here. Sorry, 370, 3756. So these line-of-site elevations show the approximate first-floor elevation of the residences off to the left side of the page. The darker tree profile is the height of the tree at the planning, and then the faded-back tree elevation is the tree at a height of five years. Green giants can grow anywhere from three to five feet per year. These elevations show kind of on the conservative end of the tree only growing at three feet per year. As you can see, we anticipate the landscaping to greatly benefit in terms of screening, and additionally, the building itself will also help with noise from Route 202 as it's going to be an additional sound barrier to the road. I'd be happy to answer any questions the public may have, as well as the applicant.
Is that your whole presentation?
That's it.
Could I ask just one question?
Sure.
You said you were putting a fence up there?
Yes.
Where is the location of the fence?
It's right behind the trees. There we go. Six-foot-high board-on-board fence.
And the heavy dash line behind the wall?
This one here?
Yeah.
That's the property line, our rear property line.
Would there be any benefit to putting the, if the, I'm sure some of the neighbors are here tonight, if the fence could go up on that property so they?
We can move it further up the hill. Absolutely.
All right. Do it?
Good.
Okay. This is a public, oh, go ahead.
Six-foot fence, deer will jump. They eat arborettes. They'll... You're showing them at that height, I don't even think they're going to get to maturity if they get in over there. There's a lot of deer on that property.
So this is a public informational hearing. It's the first look for the residents. It's unique to Yorktown. So at this time, if there are any residents that would wish to come up, ask any questions, make any comments, please do. Please. Excuse me. How are you?
George Campolo, 3790. I'm the guy behind Nestle's. So one of our neighbors is not here, who is directly behind this, and we've had ongoing talks about myself and my neighbors on either side have been experiencing. And he's very concerned about the same things, the timing of the deliveries, the noise from the site. I heard on the prior meeting that you start doing business at 5:00 a.m. That's a concern. If I was behind it, that would concern me. Tractor trailers are very loud. I know very well. This landscaping is wonderful. This is what I asked for behind Nestle's and what we needed and what we didn't get. And we have the same elevation, and through your green giants, I know because I bought them, deer don't eat them.
No, right.
And they do grow three to five feet a year. So we're just concerned for the three houses, the people in the three houses behind. One fellow just bought the house, paying top dollar. I don't know if he knew about this. And, you know, I would just hope you would do what you can. I don't know if you could start at six. Also concerned about people yelling at the intercom for, you know, the drive-through. So, and the dumpsters. I know you were talking about it the last meeting, the placement of the dumpsters. Maybe you could make a little cage up on the 202 side for the dumpsters. That's about it. We do have a lot of concerns about everything that's going on on what I call the peninsula between Garden Lane and Pine Grove and 202. It's not on the agenda. Mr. Taggart was kind enough to meet with us in the past about Nestle's, and I'm wondering if we could, with some of the residents again, come down and meet with you. We have some concerns about the traffic, and in particular, that warehouse on the windmill site. That's about it. I don't want to go off-topic and take away.
No, but it's in that same area, and I did see, I was talking to some of the members. I got sent, I guess, a flyer from the area.
Yeah, I did that.
Talking about some of the properties with proposed driveways onto the back.
Right.
Some of which is not correct. There is one.
The McDonald's, someone told my wife, one of the workers there told my wife that they were going to have a driveway. I know the site plan on the town site doesn't show it, but, and Taco Bell, the bulldozer was three feet from the fence, and there were orange cones on our road. What would you think?
Right. No, I hear you.
You know, I mean, that's, it's looked like it was done.
If there's ever any questions, I mean, John, Rob, and Nancy, they're very sensible, you know, very good about.
They have been terrific, helping with Nestle's, even though there are still some issues, so.
We're still working.
We'll talk.
Okay.
Just bear in mind, on a couple of those projects, there may be emergency or limited access on Old Crompon. That's not normal through customer traffic.
Understandable, but that windmill warehouse, it's an L-shaped building.
Yeah.
Right.
Goes all the way to the property line. You can't get trucks in from 202. One of the things you talked about was closing off one of the driveways on 202. There's a driveway on our road. There are no loading docks depicted on that sketch. 20,000-square-foot warehouse is not going to have loading docks. Doesn't make sense. So then we're going to have trucks potentially stopping on our road, and then someone coming down is going to have to go around the truck, could be a head-on. It's not good. That L should be pulled back, and the trucks come in from 202, in my opinion. So that's the biggest concern out of all of them.
Understood.
Because it's commercial traffic.
Yep.
Oh, and the neighbors right next to it have a concern about the hours of the contractors potentially being there at 5:00 in the morning slamming scaffolding around.
Okay. Well, when that comes back, obviously, you're keeping a close eye on the website, and we really appreciate that.
And I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Oh, no, that's the whole, that's, it's, listen, we're your neighbors, right?
Yep.
So we all live here, and we all want the same thing for York.
And we all love Yorktown.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your kind comments.
Just one comment. You know what I appreciate? I know you're upset. I know you're frustrated, but your calm demeanor is absolutely a model.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public care to comment on the application? Anybody else from the board? John?
I have nothing on it.
Jim?
The only comment I have is what I had the last time we had a merge. Excuse me, of the drive-through lanes, that there should be a yield sign at the intersection of the two so that both people are not driving forward at the same time.
Should be able to accommodate that.
Okay.
Let me see if there's anyone else. Some, oh, some other people. Anybody who just came in, were on the Duncan application? Anybody wish to speak or ask any questions? You got anything else to add?
If the board is okay with it, we'll move forward with preparing full site plans now. Stormwater report, and Colliers is taking care of the roadway design, so we'll eventually have their information, but till then, we'll work on our end and get this figured out. And we'll also address in our comment letter the noise from the drive-through intercom.
Yeah, as I said, and we talked about this in prior meetings, screening, the noise, you know, all those things are going to come into play, and we really appreciate you starting to take a look at how that's going to get resolved. But yeah, and I would work closely with our professional staff, keep them in the loop on everything as you're moving forward.
Absolutely.
And why don't we set up a meeting, actually? Could be Zoom if you prefer, but.
Absolutely.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion.
Do I have a motion to close the public informational hearing?
Motion. Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, next, we have EnviroGreen Associates. This is a request for the first one-year time extension. Location's East Main Street, Mahogany Lake. Hey, Joe.
Hello, everybody. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Good to see everyone. Joseph Reen, the Principal Site Design Consultants. We are still waiting on a permit from the DEC, and we're on, in a holding pattern until such time, so we're looking for reapproval of the site plan.
Okay. Anything from the board?
No, not here.
John?
I have nothing.
Jim?
No objection.
All right, nothing on. Do I have a motion to approve the request for the first year for the first one-year time extension for EnviroGreen?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Do I have a motion to close the regular portion of the meeting and move into the work session? Shall we move?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
First on the agenda, we have 670 East Main Street. This is a pre-preliminary discussion. How are you?
Good, all right. Will Angelo Lo from HON Engineering, behalf of the owners of 670 East Main Street. Robin, do you have the site plan you can pull up? That'd be great. Thank you. Yep, perfect. Thank you. So as requested at the last meeting, we have the building corners and entrances flagged so you all could go out and visit the site. I presume did as much.
I was there.
Do you have any comments or thoughts on our proposal here?
If anyone wants to start.
There's only one thing. You've got a magnificent tree in the middle of the driveway. If there's any way you can save that, try it.
Okay.
It's not mandatory, but I'm just saying, I just saw this, this tree's got to be 200 years old.
Sure.
It looks like it on the corner of the driveway, so maybe you could just.
There might be opportunity there, too.
Just take a look at that.
Of course.
I think your plan shows it as a 40-inch maple.
Yes, that's what the plan shows.
Beautiful tree.
Any other thoughts or concerns?
Where does it go from, this plan has a number of variances that are required.
Large variances.
Significant variances. It's also a problematic intersection, in my opinion. I drive by there every day, and it's intersecting with the end of Lee Boulevard, or Lee Road, rather. How do we address that? What are your thoughts on that intersection? I know you've got the driveway right there. You've got.
Tried to wind it up so that way it's not kind of offset-causing confusion there. You got, I think you have pretty good site distance.
Got a kind of convergence of elevations right on that, between that piece of property, six end going east and west, and Lee Boulevard heading, dead-ending right there. Everything's coming in that direction.
Sure.
I think at our last meeting, we discussed the possibility of having the exit from our, onto Old Jefferson Valley Road be possibly a two-way.
Right.
That would allow people to use that as an entrance to the property, and I think we.
Certainly a possibility.
We talked about maybe making the other curb cut a one-way, but I don't know if you've considered either of those two or the two together. Making both of them, basically switching it to the one on, on East Main Street, one way in, I'm sorry, one way out, and the other one both in and out.
Certainly we'll look at that. I know Old Jefferson Valley Road, it's kind of a small road.
It's a driveway, basically. I parked on that road, and I was surprised anybody, and I'm in a little car. I'm surprised anybody was able to get by.
That's sort of why we kept it on Old, on East Main Street, because of the size of Jefferson.
But I'm just considering somebody heading northeast on East Main Street, having to cross traffic to go into the site. I mean, if I had to deal with that, I think I'd prefer to take that driveway and take my chances there better, because that's a very heavily-traveled.
You're going to have a traffic consultant anyhow, I would assume.
We can have a traffic study.
I mean, I don't know if you planned on it.
There's a, you know, in the area right now, there's a lot going on.
Right.
Right, so there's development proposed right up the street. And they're going to be undertaking, you know, a consultant.
That's going to be a big thing.
And that's going to include this whole area.
Right.
Which I noticed, I noticed that, is it Surrey Court right next door?
Yeah.
That entrance that they have, or exit, whatever it is, is chained off.
Yeah.
So it's not even utilized.
Yeah, they probably had a problem.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I gotta be honest with you. It's almost, you know, I hear you, what you want to put that, my God. I mean, that is really, it's.
Yeah, I mean, I'm making it a suggestion. That'd be examined, but it's a strong suggestion at this point.
I think there's just too much going on on this piece of property for that size and that location by that intersection. I agree with Bob, you know, people trying to make a left to get in there, very difficult when you've got traffic coming in. It's hard enough to get out into that street from the shopping area every day. Then to add, sitting cars waiting to make a left as oncoming traffic is going west on East Main Street, that's.
Or if somebody's heading straight north.
Yeah.
And then trying to cross two lanes of traffic to get in.
Yeah.
By discouraging that, then it would, it would bring them back to a more orderly fashion, I think, to get on that secondary road to enter the property. That's, that's probably my bigger concern. I share the board's comments that you've got a lot of other hurdles to go over in terms of the site itself, but I think this is one of the bigger factors for me that impacts this whole thing. Everything else is kind of secondary on my list.
There is a lot on there, and I think it's a great idea that you showed a sidewalk in front with the curb. I think that would be a great addition. There is a swell there now.
Yep.
So, and there's a, it looks like a failed drainage structure down at the peninsula at the end, I guess on the town end, so that's going to have to get looked at closely.
Yep.
But the idea of, you know, a sidewalk and a curb clearly, I think, would help that area. It is a very difficult site. Clearly, it could use some TLC, but there is a lot, and there are, as you said, significant variances being sought.
Really, no one could build this site without variances.
Oh, this is no question about it. It's, you know, but that, it's, the ask is a lot for the zoning board, I can imagine. Do you know the percentage of the building that's actually passed the setback requirement?
Yeah, look.
Oh, here.
No, I don't have that number, but it's.
Yeah, it's.
That's the triangle you can.
Probably 90%.
You mean outside of the building envelope?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say it's probably 90%.
Yeah.
Right, if you move the building smack into the center, then you try harder to park, put a parking area on this property.
No, it's not easy.
It's a tough property.
Yeah.
Surrey Court.
Difficult, difficult.
Did they go under the same, I don't know, the same restrictions when they, did they go for variances? I don't know, they may not have been as large on the block.
Yeah. The lot passed it. I can't, that's got to be, no, that's clearly pre-existing.
How about the Cherry Court there? Did they go under the same zoning, and did they go for zoning variances?
They had to have variances, I'm sure.
Oh, yeah.
The one next door?
Yeah.
Because that might, that might give you a.
On that, which property is this you're referring to?
Next door.
Development right next door.
Development next door. They may, they may have went for the same variances that you guys wanted.
I think the question was whether variances were required for that project. Do you know, John?
For Surrey Court, there were deficiencies, but it may have been done under flexibility. I'd have to check.
Oh, okay.
It's a much wider piece of property, the way that just angles out. Look at all the houses they got on there, same thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they got a lot of setback.
Yeah.
Yeah, the difference really is that this project here is going to encompass that, almost that complete lot.
Yeah, the other one doesn't.
Sorry about this.
At what point do we then consider the requested variances, or does this go from us to the zoning board?
It goes from you to the zoning board, and it goes when you feel comfortable with the layout.
Like a traffic study, too.
In other words, you're getting to the point where you feel that you can move forward with it in terms of a plan.
Okay. Not sure we're at that point yet.
I don't think so. Does anybody feel?
It almost, just looking, I mean, the applicant, when you hear this, but it almost looks more suited for a four-unit. I think there's five units on it right now?
We're showing five. Anthony here was just mentioning to me about the possibility of using signage to control traffic as to limiting who can come in, making right turns only on your, on leaving the site.
That could be, that could work.
Prevent left turns coming out.
I guess a big question of the parcel is 90% of the, 90% of the project is required, requires a variance. I guess it goes to question, what about the possibility of reducing, instead of five, maybe four, taking the project down to maybe 70% of the, of the variance?
That's something I'd have to examine with my client.
Well, I know, it's a number, that's absolutely a numbers thing. There's no question about it. I, I'm troubled with the idea that the variance is so consummate on both ends. You know, these variances were, these projects were put in place when these were single-family houses, and now we're looking at it in a whole different scope.
Perhaps you can show us several alternatives with fewer houses and see what that looks like? Perhaps we can look at three, four.
No, I would go for the variances first, and if you get them for the five, God bless you.
I won't. The design is.
I wouldn't cut it.
I'm not struggling with the design, per se.
No, it's a nice-looking building.
No.
Using the variances, I'm not struggling with the layout, but I don't know what percentage of.
So is this, we take this to the variance board and discuss it with them?
I don't see that there's a whole lot of value in our spending time to review a plan that, at first glance, seems to be a reasonable layout, but is subject to severe variances, and if you don't get them.
Right.
I don't, I don't, I don't know. We could throw a number out and say, you know, four instead of five, or three instead of five.
Absolutely, yeah.
But I don't know that that's going to be meaning, it's not meaningful to me to the plan itself, because I could see very quickly how you could take a three-unit development in this format, and it would work just fine.
Yeah, but we have other issues. There's other impacts of five units that three units may not have, and that's the issues that we need to wrestle with before it goes to the zoning board, no?
I just don't know how, where we, where we bite into that.
We look at the impacts.
Did the last applicant go to the ZBA?
Never made it. The last applicant for this project?
Yeah. We had two before, right?
Yeah, you had at least two before. This, this really is the cleanest layout that you've seen, I think.
Yeah.
The other ones were bifurcated buildings. One was an L-shaped. This one seems, given the site itself, utilizes the site probably in the most reasonable way.
And it wouldn't be out of character.
No.
It's right next, it's next to the other one.
Well, to me, if you look at it that way, it's perfect. Was the marker, the stake that you had, which by the way, the stakes were really helpful, the one that was on the patio by that umbrella set, is that the corner that's closest to the road, Jefferson Valley Road, like?
I'm not.
I think so.
So what setback would be required there? Because that's about 15 feet to that corner. I mean, I don't even know, John, is that a side yard setback?
The building's like, it's 90% in the, the building's 90% out of the envelope.
Well, yes, okay, so it is. The requirement in that zone is all 50-foot requirements, so 50-foot front, 50-foot rear, and 50-foot side, so wherever you are here, you have that 50-foot requirement, so that would be a 35-foot roughly requirement. Again, it's, you're to a corner, you're not, it's not the whole side.
Right.
Which is a little bit mitigating as well, so I think it would be helpful to also have the dimensions from the back corners on here for information purposes.
Sure.
And by the way, you can ask for, you know, alternatives such as a four-unit, just so you know what the implications are, what those setbacks turn out to be. I mean, that could be in your, in your. I mean, that could be in your, in your mindset, it's not, it's not driving it one way or the other, it's gathering the information about what alternatives that you're, you're discussing.
John, is there any overlay here, the overlay district, or flexible zoning, there's any kind of special oversight that we can use?
Uh, there's possibility for flexibility.
There you go.
That's a, that's a, that's a town board, um, you know, referral, and they, they do an approval on it, that's, that's a possibility. There's no overlay district here, uh, and I don't think you'll see one by the time this project.
Yeah, right.
Wants to be moving forward.
Well, certainly, the flexibility would give it to you.
Flexibility would be able, you'd be able to, you know, modify these to your satisfaction without having to go through the zoning board.
The new structure would be further from the road than the current structure, the current garage that's there, it's to be about ten feet off the road.
But you, you know, you're, you guys would be going through the same sort of review process, I think, regardless of what your opportunities are for modifying the zoning requirements. You still have to, you know, look at what the options are, how close it is, how close one side to the main road is, you know, all of those factors, I think, are pertinent.
I mean, it's a nice looking building, it's in keeping with the rest of the neighborhood or the area. Clearly, there's issues with the driveway.
Well, if it ever gets built like this, it'll be an asset to the community, that's for sure. It's certainly better than what's there now.
A lot needs to be cleaned up.
So what's our next move?
I think we're gonna have to see some, some variations of what possibly could be done, you know, for this board and the zoning board to never quite the same thing.
Maybe a traffic study as well?
Well, again, I would talk to your neighbors, 'cause they're gonna be doing a traffic study of the whole area.
Okay.
Um, so, and you know, and that was one of the, I think, prime things we talked about when they came in front of us.
Maybe piggyback on their study.
They're gonna do the whole area.
Yeah.
Right, that's a much bigger, much bigger project, so you're gonna have numbers there.
Plus, they got unlimited funds. I know, you guys are working guys.
I mean, it is a nice looking building, as John said, it's probably the cleanest.
I'd like to see.
Plan we got. It's just, you know, ninety percent of the building is out of the envelope.
It's gonna be the case, though, 'cause that, that's an unusual building envelope to look at, I mean, it's.
That's for sure.
So, I mean, it's gonna, whatever's gonna go there is gonna require, I think the design is nice, it's in fitting with the rest of the neighborhood.
When you look at that plan, if you look at the building behind it, you know, it's almost mimic it on.
Yes, identical.
I think you're gonna have to look at some alternatives, you know, at least to prove out that this is the best way to go.
True.
Okay?
All right.
Any questions?
Sounds good.
All right, please.
If you went from three and two, would you be opposed to two separate buildings? If we did three units and two units, maybe that'll, that'll give you a larger distance for setbacks?
That could be.
And then we could.
Well, presented.
Yeah, showing.
No?
Presented, let's take a look.
And if you, I mean, when you move that around, I know there's a tree out there you wanna see saved.
Well, I mean, it's not mandatory, but it's just, just one of my quirks.
Fair enough.
Not a tree hugger, but that tree is beautiful.
That might be a way to move it around, you know, and if you look at these things, especially when you come back here, or if you get to the point where you're in front of the zoning board, you've proved out some alternatives, they're also gonna ask questions, did you talk to any of the neighbors about buying any of the property, or, you know? Not that that would help here, but.
You increase the footprint of this building, you increase the amount of disturbance on the property, so that has an effect on the ninety percent.
Yeah. You're gonna have to really look hard. All right? All right, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you.
Very nice looking building.
This decreases their income by twenty percent.
Okay, next we have the Garden Lane Development. Uh, this is a discussion for residential site plan, locations, Old Crompound Road and Garden Lane. I was there, I went there, I went there today.
Got some interesting photography.
Oh, yeah. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, good.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, just your name for the record.
Sure.
Yeah, but just mine, you say to.
Yeah, I know.
Uh, my name's Steve Demofsky, I'm with Demofsky Architecture. I have Michael Stein with Hudson Engineering here also. So, we were here a couple months ago for this, to introduce this project to the board, it's a twenty, uh, it's a twenty-unit, uh, two, two-story building, residential building. Um, at, on Garden Lane, at the old Hoffman property. Uh, we had developed a site plan with a rendering, uh, some floor plans and some, uh, site work and site circulation. After we presented it to the board, we, we came back and we, uh, we asked Michael to do some engineering work for us and try to get, uh, try to lay out some of the, the parking, get everything going with the stormwater management. Um, and, uh, take the sewer into consideration, and Mike has started that process also. Uh, we have, uh, engaged a traffic engineer also, just to do some preliminary studies until we can get a little further along with the board. Um, if there's anything, I don't know if there was any comments given, uh, already, if you had a chance to give us any comments from the last meeting, we didn't see any. Um, so we just, we just went ahead and were further developing the site, the building, the circulation, the stormwater management on the property. So I'm gonna turn it over to Mike right now, just to, um, start talking about, a little bit about the site.
Good evening, uh, Michael Stein, President of Hudson Engineering, um, engineer to record for the project. Uh, so, uh, again, from the last meeting, uh, Steve came to our office, we sat down, we reworked the circulation and the driveways to see how we could grade them out and make them work. Parts of our concern were the potential retaining walls that would be required on the uphill, on both uphill and downhill sides. We were able to re, to, to grade out the site, so on, along the, the southern side of the site, we are, we're limited to four-foot-high walls. Um, the, with the, the face of the walls actually being on, on our property. Uh, on the northern side, as you get closer to the rear, the, the walls will get up to about six-foot-high maximum. Um, also looking at, there's the circulation, we're, we've provided forty-four parking spaces, uh, going through zoning to get, to make sure, uh, we had the, the required amount of parking. And based upon the slope going, circulating through the site, we were looking at coming in on the northern side as a one-way drive and circulating through, coming out the southern side. All the driveway access aisles are twenty-four foot width where the parking exists, and they're, they're a minimum of twenty feet, uh, as you drive through, just for fire-matic access. Um, again, from the, from the roadway, the, the property slopes down towards the right or to the east, uh, we have a smaller parking area over to the right. Since this submission, we've also gone back and reconfigured that rear parking area to provide some additional, uh, area that we can do stormwater mitigation in. Uh, we've done, been working with the DEP and with Engineering Department, have done field testing, um, so for about half the site, uh, to the left, we're putting in infiltration. Um, I can, bring up this board, this is just what we've been working on at this point for today, just to kind of give you an idea. So, from this portion of the driveway, we're able to infiltrate this in with the tributary area, come into a stormwater management system here. Um, portions of the roof and this driveway, uh, and parking area in this area, we'll get infiltration here. We're looking at infiltrating up to the hundred-year storm event in both those practices, those can both fully accept the runoff from the hundred-year storm. Uh, for the tributary area, before going into those, uh, we're putting in a, uh, mechanical separator, as well as, we're having redundancy for water quality in those areas, both mechanical separator going into a. Going into isolation rows, uh, right before the infiltration. Uh, you can see on this plan the revised layout for the lower area to the right, so what we're looking at doing in that area is, for the, whatever we can't get into the infiltration system, uh, again, we're infiltrating a hundred percent of the runoff tributary to those with no release. We're directing all the rest of the water into a low sp, point of that, the driveway, to a bio, bio, bio-retention area or filtration area, where we, we're using focal point, um, filter media, uh, which is a DEC-approved, um, water quality practice. Uh, we're taking all the runoff and we're connecting into the existing pipe that goes to, up to the wetlands, up to the corner. I'm trying to think if there's anything else that I may have skipped over, um, but we're here to answer any questions?
I, I have a question about your, your basic layout. Uh, it seems like there's two or three different versions of that parking area to the right.
Correct.
And I, which is the one, 'cause I determined three so far, and I don't know which one you.
This is, this is what we've been working on as we've been developing the stormwater plan, we're trying to minimize, number one, the amount of impervious area, but number two, by doing it this way, we, we provided that entire basin that's. I'm trying to, just right in the middle of the page, on the right-hand side, that we can use for bio, bio, um, filtration.
All right, but in terms of parking, you've got, I think, uh, ten parking spaces in that area to the extreme right of your site. And another one, SP one, I think it is, you've got eight spaces, and then there's another version of this where it's further to the middle of your site.
Correct. As we've been developing things and developing the grading and stormwater.
Different versions of it?
Yes.
So this is the final version of that layout at this point?
As of right now, yes. And again, we're, we're trying to minimize the amount of pavement, we're trying to maximize this, this stormwater treatment areas. Um, and, including without impacting, falling within the wetlands setback.
All right, 'cause one of the other plans also showed, uh, a park recreation facility in a hatched area, is that now part of this version?
Uh, we, we, we don't have any of that shown on this plan.
So you're not there yet with it?
Correct.
Okay, so it's not that it's missing, it just hasn't matured.
Literally, up until my guys left today, they were working on, we're, we're working on trying to get this to evolve to where.
That explains the conflict that I found in the documents.
Understood, and my apologies, I didn't have some time to submit for the meeting, I know that can be confusing sometimes, so.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah.
Which one we're, we're to consider, so.
How do you anticipate the usage of that small lot being, for, and for, in what circumstances are you providing that for?
It's all gonna be assigned parking based upon, um, the number of units that are required.
So that'll be assigned parking to tenants?
Yes.
Would you consider trying to do head-in ten spaces from the rear part of that loop road?
Yes, and based upon where that was going and the grading back there, we wouldn't have been able to, to get the grades to a, a basin to go in. We can look at it again, but we also had a cross-slope going through there, um, that exceeded five percent. So that, that's part of the reason why we, we've evolved into this point, because we're trying to find, as we're doing the grading, we're trying to make sure that we don't have any parking over five percent.
Right, you might be able to split, split it and catch the grade between two areas of five spaces each, right?
Yeah.
That's another possibility. May reduce your impervious, and it may, it may give you more flexibility for that entire rear area for the stormwater and whatever open space and park, park-like things that you need to do.
We can definitely take a look.
Possibility.
Uh, one of the other things that was, that was shown on the, the previous plans, there was much more elaborate, um, entry, entryway, where you had more ramps, but with the grain that we've been able to accomplish, we've minimized the amount of ramps necessary to get in as much as possible. Uh, so now it's, it's walk-in from the southern side, and only a few stairs and a slight ramp to get in from the northern side.
The, the road profile that you showed us is, can you just explain to me on the, on the plan where that profile was taken?
Basically, the center line of the driveway.
The, on the, on the east side of the building?
No, from the road, looping all the way around the building.
All the way around?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So, so John's earlier comment about having the parking be off that loop road, where would it, where would the grade be a problem if, if we were to consider, even if it was broken to two locations?
Right where we're showing the, the biofiltration basin. I believe that's what John was, that you were talking about.
Right, right in there?
Yes.
So as it was transitions up and down, if you were to separate the parking, let's say you put five spaces to the north and five spaces to the south, it would still be an issue?
Well, we also have, we, we also have a wetland setback going, going, we're basically coming right up close to it.
Okay, so there's not the depth of the spaces?
Uh, that, I, we can go back and double-check.
Okay.
Again, we're, we're, this is an evolving.
Yeah.
Grading plan as, as we're developing the stormwater and developing the, the existing and, um, proposed conditions, watershed maps. And this is also a condition where this has not been reviewed or by a department, whether it's DEP or the Engineering Department, so.
I understand, it's preliminary for.
Yes.
Early.
It'll be approved exactly the way it is.
Yeah, it was like eighty-six, nineteen eighty-six.
And as far as the sewer system, uh, we have spoken with the Engineering Department, because this is served by, uh, a low-pressure sewer force main, so we've had discussions with them. Uh, that's typically also, uh, it was called an E-one system, that, we've spoken with E-one, it's not a typical residential site, so, but they have a larger type system that is exactly the same type of system, but just in a, a larger setting.
Thoughts?
No, I, I, I think they're solving some of the problems, but I, I think it's probably going to evolve a little more. I think it can continue. Um, if we haven't done the PAH, I would suggest setting that up, I mean, I think it's, has enough thought into it to.
Yeah.
Lay it out to the public.
Yeah. You know the, the deal with Yorktown with the public informational hearing?
Yes.
Okay, so, I'm sure you got some, oh, you got the elevations there, so yeah, I would get prepared, um.
I think your plan's an improvement over what we saw last.
Uh, that was at a point where it hadn't been looked at as far as grading, so once we started working on the grading, that's, that was part of the reasons why we started flipping things around and moving things and.
Mm-hmm. Do you have the twenty-three? I could still have the twenty-twenty-two.
I have it.
Oh, you got the twenty-three.
I got it, I got it.
Nancy's trying to trick me.
What do we got?
Well, we got the, uh, twenty, twenty-third, February thirteenth, okay?
Sounds good, I won't be here, so.
So we'll, you'll keep working with, uh.
Keep evolving.
Yes, keep working with John and, and Robin and, uh.
And grade.
Yeah, and we'll see you at the next one of the work session.
That sounds good. So another person from my office will be here, 'cause I will be in Disney World, so.
Oh, enjoy it.
I'll be enjoying it.
Fine, your kingdom.
Okay. Say hello to Mickey. Okay, next on the agenda, we got the Gardenia Hotel, this is a discussion of site plan, locations, one-nine-five-two Commerce Street.
Happy New Year to you.
Did you survive?
Yeah, you know, so what 2023 brings, huh? All right, I, I think, good to see you all, as you may, I think you're quite familiar with this project. This is a boutique hotel project that's slated for the corner of commerce and veterans. And it is a, this is a new use that's been brought to, put into the town code. We've had, recently the, the town amended the law to accommodate this actual, this particular project. I know we've been here before and you're quite familiar with it, I believe, at this It's going to, it comes under the overlay, which is the only district that this use is allowed. The area and bulk requirements for this particular use have been vetted through the town board and actually tailored for this project. At this point, it's 18 rooms with 18 spaces, with the code requiring 1.1 spaces per room, and then there's some spaces that are required for the rooftop bar and restaurant. We believe that, and I think in discussions with the town board, they also concurred that this is used as very compatible with the idea of starting to create a walkable downtown community. Actually, this, if, when it does get approved, is probably the, the project that will break the ice towards exactly that and hopefully will spur other type or similar type of uses and developments in the town, which is much needed in the Heights area. Some of the concerns that had been raised in the past were parking. We believe that the area accommodates parking quite well. Anybody that's familiar with summer concerts knows that we get sometimes hundreds, sometimes close to 1,000 people showing up at those concerts without any problem whatsoever. Heights area is more blacktop than it is buildings, unfortunately, and that's a throwback to the old notions of sound and urban development. They kind of missed the mark, I believe, so that's why we're here, hopefully to put it straight and get it right. I did, one of the other issues that were raised, and I know that, that under the overlay zone, there was certain designation to certain buildings of interest or historical interest or that, and I think this was one of the buildings that was designated, which is, I guess ironic in the sense that in adopting the overlay and adopting this use in the overlay, this was the, the property that most likely that was going to go, but then again, the inconsistency was to somehow suggest that this building itself was something that looked to be preserved. I had some discussion with the, some of the members of the historical committee, in particular Lynn Briggs, who I met with today about it. She suggested that there, we look into perhaps doing something to preserve the building, which would obviously require town, the town's involvement. She suggested that the building be actually relocated. It's not that, I believe it's not that expensive, but it's always a question of, and I told her I'd bring it up with my client, it'd be news to him at this point, but should the town want to participate in that, I think that's something that could be done. She suggested two sites, one which is not a town controlled site, and the other one would be at the corner of the Jack DeVito Field and maybe making it available to the Parks and Rec, I don't know. It's, uh, sounds like a bit of a stretch, but we're more than glad to accommodate the, at least the, the study or the, you know, the preliminary, look at it and we'll invite her inside the building. I don't know that that building actually has this historical significance that everybody thinks it does. It's been through quite a few renovations at this point. If it were in any other town, probably nobody would even give it a thought. I don't know if that's, you know, what that says about the community, but in a sense, but it is what it is in our, in our community and it's just, it is a remnant of the old Yorktown downtown, but not a very good representative of that, so.
What's the age of the structure?
It's probably 19, early 1900s. If you look at the architecture, it's not too dissimilar to the architecture that would be the Grace Building in architecture, but just on a smaller scale. Or if you go to Keir Street, if you go to the, a couple of remaining houses on Keir Street, it would probably be about the same. And a lot of these would be, you know, this was a, this was a farming community with the tenant farmers. Keir Street was actually tenant farmer buildings for the, you know, for the farmhands. This probably falls within that, that category. I don't think, I, I think it's probably been, pardon the expression, too bastardized over the years to make it anything worth, you know, any real historical value. But I've got no problem, you know, I, I am a big proponent of preserving our history and I, I think Lynn Briggs brings a lot of passion to the issue and I've got no problem kicking the tires with her on that, but it's always a question of time and money and I don't think there are very good alternatives to it and I don't, but I think it's, take a hard look at it, I don't think the building is one that's got that type of historical significance, but I think it's something that we probably have to address and we'll be more than glad to address, and, you know.
I may be wrong, but I was under the impression that you cannot designate historic place or without the permission to the owner.
You're right, 100%.
So, so why are we even entertaining it?
It's not, I think it was just a, it was noted as a building of interest.
So let me just try to clear up a little bit, because there seems, there seems to be continued skewing of what this is doing. So when the overlay law was created, it identified a number of buildings in the district that had some character, maybe history, maybe architectural quality, maybe just a remnant of times past, which this one certainly is. It identified them just for that purpose alone and then asked that, between the town and the developer, that there was consideration of what its intrinsic value was. Not a landmarking, not a wholesale preservation effort, nothing of that, but certainly an acknowledgement of some of the character that has been built in the town over many years that still remains with us, that may be worthwhile to try to preserve, whether you preserve it in architectural inspiration or if you preserve it by keeping the building and reusing it. But it's certainly not in any way, shape or form meant to be a preservation technique as landmarking is. It's, it's not. It's meant to be a planning tool for this board and the town board to have a discussion with an owner or a developer, that there is some importance that we put on the fabric of our town. And if there is an opportunity to move forward in a way that you either preserves it, you are inspired by it, you make, you know, some acknowledgement to it through the development that you're looking at, then that should be done.
So we make a big plaque and a big photograph?
I was, I was approached, I, I, look, I, I think it's very laudable, actually I think the intent, the way John articulated is absolutely laudable and should be, all I'm saying is that we will, if it becomes an issue, we were willing to, you know, cooperate and, you know, in, in either, you know, in, in fulfilling the spirit of the law, so.
And you've seen, you've seen this at work prior to the overlay district and you've seen it at work at the outset of the overlay district and, you know, the, the property that Michael Grace's office is on is an example. Overlay district wasn't in place, but certainly those two buildings still remain. They are in historic photographs that go back to the early part of the century. They have some place marking, there is a little bit of history there, albeit very local history in terms of the town clerk lived there, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but with a little effort, you can preserve some of those things. And sometimes putting that out in the front of an application or a developer makes all the difference, rather than once they're in, they've done plans and they're coming to the town with, with a design that they've spent, you know, $20,000 or $10,000 or $15,000 to produce, you catch them early and you have a better result, so that's the point.
And I think, you're right, and the medical building behind my building basically picked up elements, design elements that are of that turn of the century architecture, which makes it meld in very well. I, I think the design of this, I think, and, and, look, he wanted, my client wants to do, you know, he, he only does top-notch, you know, and it, he does, I mean, very high end, high-end work and he, and he wants to make it a great contribution. It's going to, I know it's going to be an issue, it's going to be raised, so I'm going to try to, you know, bring it to the forefront. We will cooperate with the historical committee as to what they may like to do. And if it, I, I think it's ambitious to preserve the building and move it, but that's something the town wants to partake in.
Michael, I'm, I'm curious how, how the conversation came about. Is this a referral from the town board or the, it didn't come from the planning board?
No, I just.
Curious how this is, how this is getting reported around.
I just got a, I just got a call. I, you know, I've known Lynn from, from other, you know, from the past, and so she just.
It was discussed at the town board and, and of course this board, and it was picked up by the landmark commission, and there was an email that was generated from the landmark commission to the town board, which they read at their last meeting, which they, at which they approved this project to go into, be reviewed under the overlay district, and at that moment, you know, spoke to that email. The email did speak to some of the issues we just talked about.
I, I just, no, the, we'll look, we're very excited about this project, we want to move it along. And so it's rather than having something come prop up, we have some surprises somewhere along the line, I figured I'd address it right up front. We're more than willing to work with them, give them a tour of the inside of the building. I, I think once they kick the tires on it, they'll see that the building has only elements of the past, but it's been too bastardized to really make it a preservation project. And I think that this, this project as it sits now does, does do exactly what the law intended, which was to, to bring in some design elements of the past to make it and, and move, you know, Yorktown forward into having a, hopefully a very walkable community. And so in that vein, I think the, the project really complies with the spirit of the law, spirit of the overlay. It's not, not a lot of parking, it's more building, which is really what the overlay intended to create. I think it utilizes the site very well without being intrusive into the rest of the community and its impacts are nominal, negligible. And so we're hoping that we can fast track this. It was the hope of, to have had this approved long ago. I guess that's everybody, every guy's hope, but every developer's hope, I should say, but we're, we're very enthusiastic about the project and we hope you are too. And I think from the preliminary view of the project in the past, it did get some very, I thought, very resounding, you know.
Absolutely. It, it, it's definitely an asset, it's, it's something we're looking for, I'm looking forward to seeing this, something the Chamber of Commerce has been after for years to get some kind of accommodations in town for people to stay in a hotel. We've sorely been lacking that. I think it's a great use of the town and to the site, so what's, what's next?
Yeah, well, I guess if you want to go through the site plan and the particulars.
Did you make any changes since we saw it last?
Yeah.
Okay, why don't we do that then?
Yeah, quickly in particular, what we did, the last site plan you, so in the CR, C2R zone, setback requirement on the front yard is 15 foot and a side yard is zero or 10 feet, right? So the original plan that you saw, or the one you saw in the past, had the, had the building all the way up on the property line on the commerce building side, right? On, on the east side. So for the purpose of constructability, we moved the building off that line. Therefore, we're encroaching on the 15-foot setback and our setback is six foot, but under the overlay, the planning board has the ability to vary that 60%, which would put us at the six foot. But it still creates a nice little plaza area, an outdoor seating area right up on the sidewalk. I don't think it's going to have any, but a positive impact moving a little closer. So with that said, by, with the side, the depth of the building that we have, on the backside where we need to have 10 feet, we have nine and a half, so we need a half a foot, a variance of a half a foot on that backside. And then, other than that, we have 18 parking spaces, one for each room, and, you know, as Michael said, our, our pitch is that there's plenty of parking in the adjoining areas that's open to the public and, and we would only expect that, that would, that would occur when the rooftop is open and you have a crowd come for the rooftop. So it's not going to really conflict with, you know, soccer games during the day or, or anything else that might be going on on the field or something that's going on at the Capellini building.
So are those 18 spaces reserved for the user, for the guests of the hotel?
We could, we could say that, sure.
Okay.
Sure.
So you gained that green strip on Commerce Street by moving the building over, is that what you're saying?
No, we, that we had, it's the, it's the green strip that's on the backside of the building, the commerce building side.
No, on, which did you gain, the greens?
This, on here.
You moved it away from?
Sideline, sideline, right here, this line right here.
Oh, okay.
So the setback is zero if you're on the property line and if you provide a setback, it must be 10 feet?
10 feet, and we're providing nine and a half.
And you're doing this for the purposes of constructing the building?
Yes, because if, if you can envision that the commerce building parking lot is higher there, there's a retaining wall.
Right.
So we don't want to be right up against that retaining wall.
Right.
With our excavation and have to worry about underpinning that wall or doing anything like that.
Mm-hmm, get it. And the variance on that is before us, not anyone else?
That's right.
Okay.
And, and plus, for the purpose of maintaining the building, if they have to clean windows or paint or whatever, it's just.
Easier, sure.
Yeah.
Other than that?
And, and those are the changes.
Okay.
So what are the next steps?
Either with the biggest, yeah, I'll reiterate with the parking, you know, between the fields, San Gennaro, feast, all the other things that go on in town, there's never been a problem.
I understand, yeah. Okay.
The next steps, I think.
I don't know, I, we've, I'd rather not. I, I, the status now was, I guess we would go to a, just to a public hearing, I, I don't know what if I want to do, can we avoid a, a public informational hearing? I, quite frankly, don't.
We keep running into that issue.
I don't know why you'd.
We'd like to avoid the duplication on some of these projects.
Can't believe it.
I don't know if we can.
That's such a redundant.
We've talked about that.
I think there, I think that's, God, it'd be certainly optional, it certainly is not required by town law, but I mean, it's, I would think this thing has been kicked.
Everybody knows.
Everybody's got, you know.
Are we doing both at the same time?
Can we do both at the same time, huh?
So in this limited circumstance, we could, the planning board could waive the requirement of a public informational hearing. It can only do so, the town board under the town law can give the planning board flexibility to waive requirements on special permits, but not on subdivisions or site plans. So because this is a special permit use, the, and the town board has granted authority in, was it chapter 280 of the town code, to waive the public information, to waive any requirement, you can do so for special permit uses. So that means you can waive the, the public informational requirement for a special permit use.
That includes a site plan review of this?
Well, the site, the special permit is part of the site plan.
Okay.
So we're in motion?
We like that interpretation.
I mean, this is, it's, this has been in the press.
Oh, it's been all over.
A public hearing is obviously mandatory.
Public hearing is mandatory in the town law.
Right.
So can we, can we do a public hearing then if the board's in favor on the, will you be ready? Oh, I still got the, I'm sorry, I got the old.
Yeah, January 26th.
Well, what, what else, what are you doing with stormwater?
Excuse me?
What are you doing with stormwater?
Oh, yeah. Well, this is a redevelopment project, so it's in, basically most of the, you know, we have an existing parking lot, so. So, and it's in a Main Street designated area, so we get special consideration for that. So we have, we don't have to deal with the full gamut of stormwater requirements here. So we're going to take that challenge on, we haven't yet, but I don't know if that really is going to change what we're doing.
Put it in the Main Street designated area, you need to do SWIP.
That's correct, but we don't have to meet all the criteria, water quality and whatnot.
So can we?
I think that, you know, there's still some information that you probably need to come in to, before you do the public hearing, I think, is my opinion. Certainly, you can do a public hearing, get that information in afterwards, but I don't think you can do an approval without the full amount of information where it's, you know, you prove out that this is a constructable site.
I'd rather go to a hearing with the full information.
I agree. Are you, can you be ready with that information?
I don't think the fixed points are going to change at all, so I mean, we're really talking about.
But if we're waiving the public informational, so we want to make sure that when we get to that point.
The only hesitancy I have to say yes to that is, I can do it, and I'm in the, dealing with the weather now, so if we get weather conditions where I can't do testing, then, you know, all bets are off. But I would say I would prefer to schedule it and take my chances and have.
We can always pull it off.
Yeah.
We can always pull it off of it.
Yeah, let's see if we can go ahead on, because I don't think.
We can always adjourn, keep it open.
It would be February 13th.
February 13th.
And besides, a lot of the fixed points on the site plan aren't going to change anymore. It's mostly going to be underwater, I mean, underground.
What kind of weather are you talking about, Joe?
I don't know, but I'm waiting for that two-week snap where we get, you know, some freezing weather.
You got five days ahead of you that are good.
So you have, you've done a rendering. How was that done? Was that done by a consultant?
Yeah.
And did they produce it in like an auto cab program, or is it just a?
Do you need terminal renderings? The external one?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a Revit drawing.
It is. So there's a 3D model of everything that was shown in that drawing, right? Can you present the 3D model?
Yeah.
Here, so you can move around the building and show this board, give them a very good idea about the massing, it's closest to the street in that model?
I'll have to see how I can do that. I could definitely.
You know what I'm talking about, I mean?
I could definitely give you all the points of view, if I knew them ahead of time, to actually rotate the model.
Yes.
I probably can, I have to figure out how to do it.
All right, that, I think, would be very helpful, given what this building is, and where it is.
Yeah. Okay. We'll shoot for the 13th, if not, we'll let you know beforehand, so that, you know.
And if you get that tour, or you give them that tour of the inside of the building, just keep us in the loop.
Yeah, I would be more than glad to, even if there's something that, you know, if you can't preserve the building, maybe there's something on the inside that can be preserved. Got no problem with that. I think that's an absolutely laudable goal to do that in any way, I think my client anyway will be, love to accommodate that.
That building's a bit of a youngster, in terms of Yorktown. It's 1920 it was built.
You know, when we went, we had, there was something at the Hanover Farm, and they had, it was very, very well-done presentation, and they talked about how anything in any era, it's like 60s, 50s, even 80s, can be considered historic for that. You know, it really is.
The big thing is mid-century furniture, and it's like, god-awful ugly. Somebody likes it somewhere, so. You know what, I got no problem, it's funny, because I told her, I said, you know, if you go to any other town, you know, that type of building, architecture is like their city plight. Now, I'm not going to be facetious, but there's a lot of, even upstate towns in New York, where these old, you know, basically the old neighborhoods have become dilapidated with those, that kind of structure, and they're not really considered. But, I've got no problem. I think it's, again, I think it's a laudable thing to attempt to do, and if the town wants to do it, wants to participate in it, they can have to get on board quickly. We've got no problem, you know, seeing what we can do.
So if you do, if you are going to meet with them, just let us know.
Yeah, absolutely, all right.
All right.
I appreciate, appreciate your talk.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda, we have a zoning board referral, number 57-22, Curdy. It's 1655 Central Street, Joe Arena. Yeah. Did I go past that? Oh, I did.
Yeah, you jumped ahead. It's early.
Yeah, okay. This is one of those small lots.
What neighborhood is this in?
It's up by St. Pat's.
Yes.
Central.
I just didn't.
Didn't click right away?
Yeah. Another one of those places.
We've done a few of these.
Yeah, so this is, this is the site here, this is Central, right here, Hanover is out here, and this is Front Street down here, so this is, this is the property right here, and it's, sorry.
Can you zoom in?
Yeah, I'm going to zoom in. Sorry, Tom. Okay. So that's the site right there. As you can see, in the vicinity, it's not unusual to see lots of that size. Right down the block, you have one here, you've got 1, 2, 3, 2 here. Around the corner, you've got another one here, so on and so forth. As you, you know, you go around the neighborhood, you'll see there are these houses that were constructed on these 5,000-square-foot lot. And this is a straggler, I guess, of a time gone by. My client is contract vendee for this property.
Who owns it now? The neighbor?
No. I can't remember the person's name. But it's not, it's not, it's not the person that lives on either side, that I'm aware of. So anyway, so it's before the zoning board. The site plan that we put together shows a house that meets all the setbacks, and the variance is an area variance for the size of the property. Where 20,000 square feet is required, it's, the lot is 5,000 square feet.
That driveway, it shows us it's existing, is that?
Pardon me, John?
Is that an existing paved area? That's what it showed out in one of the drawings.
Says that in the drawing.
It may be. Let me just go back to the. It looks like it is.
Do you know what it was?
Don't, John. Don't.
Joe, am I correct in assuming this house, as it's drawn, is simply going to be turned on its side, to fit on the lot?
Correct.
So it's going to be a house that otherwise would look like it's supposed to be this way, is going to be?
Yeah, and I don't have it with me, but the, my client pulled something out of a, out of a magazine that actually has a front-facing, a front-facing side, so that side would look like the front. And I don't have that with me. I was looking for it, I couldn't find it.
Is it a, do you know, are they going to live here, owners, or are they just filling?
He wants to live here.
He wants to live here. Do you know if they plan to do like a modular, or is it stick-built?
Uh, did not say.
Did not say.
Just looks like a stick-built plan.
Yeah, most likely it's going to be stick-built.
It's a cute little house.
Live on the side of them.
I think there are ways to design a house that will look like it's addressing the street, that will still accomplish, plan-wise, what he's looking to do.
Right.
Which three-bedroom house, but.
Which is the plan he found.
These plans don't do that, that faces the side.
This face, that's my objection, is that it's facing, you're taking a house that normally has a front elevation, and you're turning it 90 degrees to fit on the property, and the front door is going to be on the side of the house. And the end of the house is going to be on the street, so you're going to pull two cars in, I'm assuming.
Understand, the house plan that was submitted was just to get the denial from the building department.
Okay.
Because we can't go to the zoning board unless the building.
I'm hoping you're going to tell me that you're going to come back with a different plan?
There is, and as I said, he found something that he likes, that has a front, a side view, that is the front view, so.
Why don't we put that in a memo back to the zoning board, what you're talking about?
Yeah, Abaca's going to look at it anyway, right? I don't want to do the architecture, but I have a plan that would do this exactly, and I appreciate what the issue is, but I just, I don't see the solution, and I was hoping you were going to tell me that this was just to get the denial.
Yes.
Not their intent.
No, that was it, just to get the denial from the.
Joe, is there any precedent in the neighborhood?
Yeah, he showed.
Yeah, you've got a few houses in it.
The same way?
Same thing, 5,000 square foot.
Yeah, but not side-facing.
Oh, as far as the way the house is facing? I don't know, yeah.
Most of those will be older homes, and they will be facing the street.
Yeah.
There could be an oddball that, you know, was a, you know, raised ranch that got sideways built, but there's not, to my recollection, too many. You certainly can take a look at that. And that, you know, all of that is pertinent, the size of the lot, I think the history of the ownership is pertinent, because if it was owned by the neighbor at one time, and you are deficient, and you have two lots next to each other, they're supposed to be combined to make, you know, there's all of that stuff going on here.
Yeah, they get merged automatically.
And there is a typo in one of the letters that describes the requirement. The requirement for lot width is 80 feet, not 50, and they have 50 feet, not 30, so just, just getting the record straight there.
So would it be smart to have them get the new information, come back? All right?
Yeah, we're scheduled for the zoning board this, the end of this month.
So you can write a memo requesting that they adjourn it, and that you get to look at it again, if you want to do that.
Whatever you want to do.
I think we should do that.
I think the design of the house is critical to endorsing the variance.
Plus the history.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thanks, Joe.
Okay, thank you. Good night, everybody.
Good night, Joe.
All right, next we have a zoning board referral, number 53-22, Taco Bell, Mohegan Lake signage, location 3571 Mohegan Avenue.
This before us at one point, or?
Oh, yes.
So, what happened to the sign?
This, he was supposed to be here last time, he never showed up.
Oh.
You remember?
Yeah.
Yep. What's the matter with this guy? Now, didn't you say Taco Bell already had to sign up?
Taco Bell I'm talking about has to sign in the wrong place. This one is Mohegan Lake.
Mohegan Lake, okay, we got you.
The other one's down here.
Well, he didn't come up last time either.
Were they going to show up?
You might have looked at the other Taco Bell.
Which one is, this is?
This is the one up in Mohegan, Route 6.
Route 6, yes.
Yeah, the one we recently dealt with. Okay, and we didn't pick up on this particular signage problem, or we did?
I don't recall, I don't think so. The problem is that the sign doesn't, there's two signs that don't face frontage.
Right.
And so I think that's what they're asking the variance for, although it sounds like it's for one sign. Is the one in the back? So two of them?
It's a result of the way it's laid out on the lot and the roads?
Yep.
It's kind of too forward-facing?
Which elevations are we looking at here?
This side faces St. Mary's, this side faces the interior of the lot, this side faces Route 6, and the one up here faces Mohegan Avenue.
Because they switch, application does not, south elevation, not front Mohegan Avenue, does not front east, doesn't front either one of the streets.
So if you're looking at drawing A4.0?
Hold on.
Okay, that elevation, that's the only one on that page, faces Mohegan Avenue. You go down to the next sheet, the long elevation on the top faces St. Mary's.
Oh.
The two on the bottom, the one on the left faces Route 6, the one on the right faces the interior of the lot. And so I think they need variance for the one, for the interior of the lot, and also the one that faces St. Mary's, I believe.
The one that faces St. Mary's, isn't that visible from Route 6 going east?
Yes.
So in my mind, it kind of faces Route 6.
Yeah, right.
Well, facing is head-on.
Okay.
Not glancing, going outside. Head-on is, it's like a street address, that's supposed to be.
I understand, but from a business point of view, you want your customers to see the identification of your business. That's the way to think. We approved that layout.
Why are we arguing?
I don't see an issue.
I don't mean to be arguing, I don't even know why we're bringing this issue up to ourselves if these people aren't even here, presenting the problem to us.
Well, it came as a zoning board referral.
Yeah, they're not meant to be here.
If they have an issue with this, and it's been denied, they should be pleading their case, not us pleading our case.
Absolutely.
Okay, then let's adjourn it.
Well, would they have been, would they have been informed to be here? This is a referral, this is not the applicant.
Oh.
He was before Abaca, and they told him this morning he didn't have to come, because he couldn't make it anywhere he had conflict. But it would have been the signs.
What did Abaca say?
That would be an interesting, what did it, do we know what Abaca?
Abaca says they have no objection to the variance. I have no objection to it either.
I don't, I don't really care one way or the other.
Yeah, right, it's out there, it's.
Sort of facing at an angle.
Give him a memo.
They say that the variance requested is for 24.7 square foot, and I wonder if you took the two signs together that don't face a road frontage, whether that would be more than 24.7 feet. However, if everybody looks at this building in these drawings and says they really don't feel that this is anything terrible, I don't think you need to worry about that, but.
I would say let it go. It's a sign. You see it coming out of CVS, you see it going down Route 6, it's. I would expect to see it. If you're coming out of the pizza shop, you may not see it, but it's Taco Bell. Their colors are very distinctive. Yeah.
I have no issues.
No issues.
All good?
All good.
No planning objections?
No.
Nope.
Next case.
One more.
All right, next we have a town board referral, amendments to section 300-39B, affordable housing. Robin to present.
Oh, I, yeah. Well, this is good. This is broadening the reach of the law, right?
Yes.
It's not?
No, it's not.
Yes, it is. How it's not broadening the reach of that, you're removing, you're removing the time bar on what can be considered affordable under this law.
Right.
So that's broadening the reach.
But it doesn't create any affordable housing units, because it, you know, that only applies to the ones that have already been built and protected in the late 1980s, 90s.
That cannot be considered.
Right, but the ones, for instance, if you had Kier Street in front of you now, those could actually be managed by the Affordable Housing Committee, whereas before, they could not.
Right. The old law says that an affordable housing unit had to have been in existence as of 1994.
Right.
The new law takes away the date restriction.
Correct.
So.
There's also, which are not in here, one of the comments of one of the, or of the Affordable Housing Board is to have some additional language, which brings the law more into comportment with the model housing law. Just so you know that that's out there as well. But what's in front of you is removing the timestamp, or whatever you want to call it.
It helps, and it allows the town to actually, it allows the town to actually manage the house, as opposed to it being something accounting.
Any issues?
No issues.
No?
Nope.
No planning objections?
No planning objections.
No.
Do I have a motion to close the, the meeting?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.